Something just flashed up on my screen.
What's that? You lost the special?
I said, no, 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 you pushed a button and it something flashed up on my screen that said Sarah Palin lost her special election.
Oh.
Can you, can you push the button a couple more times?
Sounds like a good, I mean. I remember some adult videos about Sarah Palin, but it wasn't her. Anyways, welcome everybody to the Pennsylvania Pirate Party meeting. Uh, we have some special guests tonight. Uh, and I'm going to just let everybody identify. Uh, I am Drew Benjamin. I am the captain of the Pennsylvania Pirate Party. And, uh, Johnny, Alex move, kick it to you.
Hi, I'm John Robinson. I am the secretary of the Pennsylvania Pirate Party.
Ed, go for it.
Hi, I'm Ed, uh, from Sunbury with the Pirate Party.
All right, Alex.
Hey, how's it going? My name's Alex. Uh, I'm with the Stair Party, but me and the Pirate Party were great friends, great friends. I. Uh, we hope to work, I wanna, I wanna work together more. Uh, that's why I'm a regular attendee at these meetings. So. Here I am. So glad to meet the, uh, Workers' Party and the Keystone Party. I've been watching the Keystone Party very closely. Uh, over this November election as well.
All right, now our, our, now our extra special guest, cause, uh, Alex is, is a regular guest. Uh, Henry.
I am Henry Conley with the Workers' Party of Pennsylvania. And, uh, looking to forward to working with my comrades in the Pirate Party.
And last but not least, actually the man of the hour, Dan.
Don't, don't call me the man of the hour. Now, now you've like put pressure on.
No, no, I, I would never, I would never, never. We're pretty chill here.
I, I know most of you here. So, uh, hello, nice to see people again. Or in the case of John, not see you because you've like blanked us out here.
So tell us why you're here, Dan.
Well, I'm here to have you violate federal election laws. No, I'm gonna have you violate federal election. It's funny because, um, Alex was saying that he's been following what's going on with Keystone Party. And, uh, it's strange because there really is no Keystone Federal Party. So I was approached, I'm actually still a registered independent. Right now, I'm not even a member or did not register as Keystone Party member. But they said they were looking for a candidate and I gave them one of those. If everybody's familiar with how I usually end up in these dire situations, it's usually like if you can't find somebody else to do this. Couple of times. And finally I said, look, if you, you know, how many signatures are required for this? And they said 5,000 to get you on as a Senate candidate. And candidly, I didn't think they'd be able to get 5,000 signatures. So I said, uh, you know, if you could get 5,000 signatures, I guess I'll do that for you. And then they got 7,500.
Well, you know.
You all find that humorous.
I find it hilarious, but you know, that's, that's what happens when, you know, you know what they do though, when you, when you volunteer sort of. Like that, they stop looking for anybody else. They go, yeah, Dan said he'll do it if we don't find anybody else. And we won't find anybody else if we stop looking. So, um.
Well, well, here's part of backstory here that you folks probably haven't heard. So it, it, you know, you're all, a bunch of you form a libertarian, see to how paid petitioners work and stuff. And I'm not gonna throw the name out there of this particular person, but somebody who was a paid petitioner. Got a whole bunch of, uh, signatures for the Keystone Party and, um, I got a call. Oh gosh, about a week and a half, two weeks ago. And they said, you have to, you have to go down to Philadelphia and visit this person. They're in the hospital. And I'm like, what's going on? And, uh, apparently somebody, um, was so inclined to work on. Getting petitions signed and ballot access, that they weren't watching their health. And apparently something happened with their leg and they had to have their leg amputated.
Oh my god.
Lord.
So I walk in in a hospital to meet this individual and I was like, you know, I'm like. I, I was like, what are, what are you doing? Like, why wouldn't you take care of yourself? I said, you know, getting signatures to get me on the ballot and obviously other people. Isn't like something you should be jeopardizing your health over. And this individual, like in a hospital bed with no leg and he, and he said. You know, I'm glad, the first words out of his mouth were, I'm glad you're on the ballot. And I'm like, what? That's like craziness. So. Anyway, I don't, I've never, I foreseen somebody wanting to like give up a limb for me for.
Well, that's what, so now we know that it costs at least a leg to get you on the ballot. Nobody lost an arm though. There's no, no arms, arms lost in.
Of the five million things you should not sacrifice to get ballot access, a limb is right up there. I'm just saying.
I, uh, couldn't agree more and I'm like. Absolutely blown away by the fact that somebody would go at it, like literally do this and be that driven. And it, and it's that kind of fanaticism that actually completely, what's a good word for it? It, it just, uh, it just.
Intimidated you into running?
What's that?
Intimidated you into running?
No. I don't work well under pressure. So, no, but no, I, but it's like fanaticism. It's like, I don't understand. Why anybody's like that with any candidate for office. You know, to me, it's like, you know. It just doesn't make sense. I mean, it, it's so mind boggling to me. You don't have divisive everything is too. It's crazy. So. Anyway, that's.
So you're on the ballot for Senate?
I am.
You are, you, so you are running against John Fetterman and, uh, Dr. Oz.
Uh, Dr. Oz, who actually my, I'll, I'll tell you another little funny story. My mom's 88 years old. She's been like a Republican committee woman for like a hundred years. Literally from like the time of Eisenhower or something like that. And, um, if, if you actually ask her her positions on things, she clearly should not be a Republican. Okay, but she's been at it for so long. It's like, you know, so like my mom's pro-choice. She's actually against like assault. She's like your stereotypical Democratic, whatever, you know? But she's a Republican, or she's been a Republican committee woman forever. So she used to actually work for a Republican state senator by the name of Lisa Baker. In, in. Baker, right? Like he's, Lisa's probably your senator up in, uh, Wayne County, right, John?
Uh, the name's a bit familiar. I'm not sure what position she holds, but.
Yeah, okay. So like my mom used to work at her office over by Lake Wall in Pawpack. My mom, every time they needed a picture of a senior citizen, they'd call my mother up. And they'd be like, well, you see on our campaign piece. And my mother would be like, oh yeah. So this woman always invites her to her fundraisers and gives her a comp ticket. So this year my mom gets this comp ticket in the mail and she gets there. And who's the guest? Dr. Oz.
Oh boy.
So they're trying to get her mom to have her picture taken with Dr. Oz. And I'm like, you know, I'm like, you're setting up this little old lady. Well, my mom was smart enough to not do that. So what I told my mom was, look, I said, if you have an opportunity again. To like have your picture taken with Dr. Oz, I said, you basically have my permission to do that. Okay? I said, you just have to bear in mind one thing. If you're gonna do that, you need to do one thing. You need to ask that you be able to pose with one of his posters. And you hold the poster next to him. And I said, and I don't know if you can see this, I just wrote like, oh, let me do this. Oz, can you see that on? So I told my mom, if, if they try to do this to you again. Just take the sign and flip it up like this.
Nice. Took me a second there with the lighting.
So she said, I don't think they'll try to do that. And I said, I, I wouldn't put anything past these people at this point. So. You know? So, so here's the, here's the other thing. I, I started talking about, like the Keystone Party is a state party. So they're not allowed to do anything that a federal party can do, which would include, um. Engaging in any type of federal influence of an election. So they can like have, like list me as a candidate, but they can't actively like hand out. Documents or, or flyers or pay for any of that stuff. And it's gotta be paid for by me and all this other stuff. I don't know if anybody saw what, um. What's his name? Um, Eric Gerhardt spent out of his own pocket.
No.
His federal election, um, reports say, the last time I looked, that he's paid, he's spent on his own. Twenty six thousand dollars of his own money.
Wow, Jesus Christ.
And the, and the crazy part was I was driving through Allentown over, if, if anybody's familiar with the baseball stadium in Allentown. They put up the Coca-Cola Stadium. I was driving through Allentown one morning. I had to go to a continuing legal education class there. And I'm, I filled up at BJ's cause the gas is cheaper. I'm driving back down to, uh, the county bar association. As, and as I'm driving by the ballpark, I look over at this billboard. And there's this huge billboard with Eric Gerhardt's picture on it. And I'm like, what in the world? So I don't know where all the money's coming from. Assuming he's, I don't know if he's pulling it out of his own pocket or what, but.
Well, you can, so you as a candidate can set up your own, uh, candidate, uh, funds. That are separate from your personal funds, right? So you can raise money as a candidate.
Yeah.
And, and get donations as a candidate directly to you, although the party has to not really be involved with that.
Correct. So, so what I'm allowed to do under federal law. Is I'm allowed to raise up to or spend up to five thousand dollars. Before I even have to file a.
Yeah, okay.
So like if I have my cellphone or a cellphone, I, you know, list the charge for that and all this other stuff. And if I hit that threshold, then I actually have to file with the Federal Election Commission. So the, the rule in Pennsylvania is I think five or 600 bucks or something before you file. But for federal, it's completely different.
Yeah.
Automatically defer to the federal election people and that's how it gets filed. So technically, since there's no National Keystone Party, I am the National Keystone Party. So I'm like Caesar.
That works, you know?
So I'm like, I'm out there and I'm like, I'm just like, like, you know, trying to do everything. I'm like the Staples. Like, it's gonna be a button and stuff and. It's weird because I keep getting these calls from like newspapers and whatnot and you're like, answer all these questions. And, uh, I don't wanna let them know that I'm like a staff of one. I actually have like a couple of volunteers, people who have volunteered. But if you're a part of a state party, you're also not allowed to coordinate your campaign. So I, like, if I had somebody from the state party that wanted to work on my party, if they were on the board. I would basically then have to turn around and say, you have to remove, you know, you have to take a leave of absence from the board. So.
Cause it's, cause that, that counts as like a, sort of like an in-kind donation. Sort of, not, not exactly, but.
It'd be kinda coordinating. Now, honestly, I know for a fact that like. Republicans and Democrats do this all the time. They do it at a local level. They'll send like, literally send lobbyists to like local political committees. To work on behalf of federal candidates. And the local party will allow them to have some space there and do all kinds of stuff. And it's, you know, like, it's been going on for years, but nobody's ever gonna crack down on it. But with little parties. Trust me, if they can find some way to like cream anybody, they're gonna do it. Just to stop people from running against their machines. So. That's my whole speech.
That's your, that's your speech.
All I got for you. So.
So are you looking, uh, what, what are you looking for from the Pennsylvania Pirate Party, I guess? What's, what's your purpose?
Really can't ask the Pirate Party. I don't wanna put you in a position where folks or any, like the Workers' Party or anything like that. Would get in trouble for supporting a federal candidate. But i- if you could just go on, I have a Facebook page and just like it and share it or something like that on your own. That would be a huge help. Um, with the Libertarian Party, when we were all involved, we were able to do that. I, I. Facebook is weird because you're not allowed to run ads unless you've been a pre-approved by them and.
Oh my god.
And it has to be, you have to submit all this paperwork. I did it last time when I ran for Attorney General. It was like, I have to get a tax ID number and I had to take a picture of myself in my car. My driver's license approved that I was that person and all this other nonsense. And I literally went through like gays submitting all this stuff. And I get to the very end. And they said, you had to do this in like September of the.
I helped, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
And I was like, you know, why wouldn't you put that up front? I didn't go through all this nonsense. Because you can't run ads, you can't run a political ad. I mean, you could have space, but you can't run a political ad. So the cost of political ads was like pretty low. And you could, I could have reached like 500 people or a thousand people a day for like 50 bucks. You know, and my whole plan was just to run social media ads, cause I didn't have a budget to do any of that stuff. And, um, couldn't do it, but by getting every, by explaining that to people and getting them to share the Facebook page, I think it was very helpful. So.
Well, if nothing else, we're live streaming on YouTube right now.
Oh, are we?
Yeah.
I.
Uh, and it will be, it will be on, it will be on for replay and I'll just, and I'll put the link up, um. And that's, you know, that's not even officially i- in necessarily supporting you. But at least getting the, getting the information out to, uh, voters that, of what you've said here today.
That's what I'm trying to do is just get my message out there so people can hear it. Like I said, I don't wanna get people in trouble. You, you know that when I ran as the Attorney General candidate, I was probably the only Attorney General candidate in the history of mankind. Who actually encouraged people to sue the state of Pennsylvania. And I, my plan was to enter into consent decrees if people felt that the Ninth Amendment. Was being violated. That's the one that says the rights that are not enumerated in the Constitution are reserved by the people. And I was like, man, if, if people would just say that this is violating the Ninth Amendment. I was trying to encourage people to sue the state and I, as the Attorney General who would represent the state, would be able to say. I'm not gonna contest that. Let's get rid of this law. And I was, I was just hoping to wipe a whole bunch of really malicious laws off the book that way. So.
So what is your, what is your number one issue, uh, in this election? Is it just that the other guys are complete scumbags? Is, is that it?
No, I mean, uh, you know, I'm not, uh. I have a lot of, I have a lot of problems with a lot of the stuff that's going on. Um, a lot of the stuff that gets redefined by political parties. Um, I know like there's this whole movement to not have people discuss critical race theory, for instance. And they've actually redefined what critical race theory is. And it's like, you know, critical race theory is a situation where a law. Has been drafted and then applies to races differently. Okay, there's different applications. And there's all ki- I, I mean, we have a history in this country to this. You know, that's why we had the 13th and 14th Amendment. And there's this whole perception that like all of these. Equity problems just up and disappeared and like. Now you can't, in some schools, private, public schools, they're drafting laws in some states so you can't even talk about it. I mean, it's the most ludicrous thing I've ever heard of in my life. So I'm trying to just bring to people's attention these really serious issues. I mean, trying to shut down discussions about what things are by like calling them something that they're not. Is just, it's like 1984 all over again, you know, George, or where's George Orwell here? It's absurdity. And then, you know, another thing would be with Fetterman. Fetterman's running around saying, well, I'm responsible for, you know, he did his big tour to. Legalize, so to speak, marijuana, right? So I keep telling people, the same thing I was telling people when I ran as the Attorney General candidate. I said, if you go to, when I was running against Josh Shapiro and I'm not running against him now. But, um, he was running around doing press conferences in primarily minority neighborhoods. Doing drug busts there and he would always have a table set up with a pile, like a pile of weed. A pile of cash and a bunch of guns. And I, and, and I have an office in Doylestown, Pennsylvania. We have a dispensary here. It's a legal dispensary. To get a dispensary license, you pay like, you have to show you have capital of a million dollars and all this absurd stuff. But they're not allowed to take credit cards because it's a federal law that you can't use credit. So you have to pay for everything in cash. So I say to people, gee, if they were to bust the dispensary or if they were to go into a dispensary and pull out the stuff. You would have the following items there. A pile of weed, a bunch of cash. An unarmed security guard because of the pile of cash and a gun there. It's the same exact thing.
Well, I think that was the tactic of the feds, of the feds for a while in California when they first started all the dispensary stuff. They would go in and raid. Dispensaries and, and take all their cash and there wasn't anything, anybody, they couldn't really do anything about it. Because under federal law, they, it, it was drug money.
Hmm. What, it, but in my mind, they've now given it this, this sort of blessing. Because of the fact that, um, you know, you've, you've all laughed, you've given somebody a permission slip. By giving them a license to do this. The, the drug laws in this country are completely. I mean, I'm completely against, um, you know, this ongoing drug law. I, I, I mean, it just. It's causing our immigration problems. People are coming here from South and Central America because of the violence we create down there. I mean, it just goes on and on and on. It's, it's so absurd. If you actually start talking to people about this stuff. And they realize what you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
They, they generally accept that. And I say generally because. I have a friend I was talking to the other day about this and the guy had always aligned himself as being very libertarian. And even though I told him all this stuff, he said, I still wouldn't support legalization of drugs. And I said, why? And he said, because the government would still screw it up. And I was like, you can't take that position. It's like, you gotta do something here.
Mm-hmm.
Become this big convol- I mean, police brutality issues, immigration issues, breaking up. All of this stuff is related to that. All of it.
Alex, did you, do you have a question for, for Dan?
Yeah, I just, I, I real, I'm sorry for like cutting it off like this. I, I really don't like doing this.
Go ahead.
But I have, I, I, I'm honestly about seven minutes late for another meeting. Um.
Not to have your leg in.
Yeah, uh, Dan, I really wanted to talk with you, um, further. Uh, and, and possibly, uh, Henry as well. Uh. I've been, and I, I think I discussed it with you earlier, Drew. And this could possibly help you out with your campaign, which is, um. A, a con- sort of like mini conference of northeastern third parties. Um, that could be good press for your campaign and could be a, a. Long lasting effect type deal. So look how, look at this, what successes the campaign brought. Um, I have more details, but again, I don't wanna like run off the conversation. So is there any way to contact you really easily and we could maybe, uh, set up a meeting later?
Sure, there's actually a website. Um, it's P A for Wassmer. I think it's dot com. You could go there.
Spell your last name for us, Dan.
W A S S M E R.
Uh, P A for Wassmer dot com doesn't, doesn't show anything.
No, it's not, it's the number four.
Oh, oh yeah, cause I forgot the, the other four. It's like 300 bucks for, uh, okay. Uh, it doesn't, hold up. The, this, the page cannot be displayed. Please contact your service provider for more details. I'm glad we figured that out now.
Well, you know what? It may be, what did I just say? P A for, it may be Wassmer for P A.
Okay, hold up. We're gonna figure this out.
It's one of the two.
Hold up, it's loading. Okay, I got it. Uh, and there's a way to contact you on there, a phone number or something?
There's a, uh, place where you can put in contact information. It'll actually go right to my.
Okay, uh, I'll send you the, uh, I'll send you some more details there about like the basic idea. Um, and we can possibly set up a meeting in the future. I would love to meet with you. Um, and obviously Drew, the, the invitation is, obviously, I, I didn't feel like I needed to.
Nope, nope, you're good, you're good.
That, it's passed on to you, obviously, um.
And, uh, and, and officially, that's Wassmer for P A dot com.
And it's the number four, not.
The number four.
Right.
Um, on that note, I can eat about two. I just wanna say I endorse and support whatever we're gonna do with, uh, Dan. I think it'd be great. So I'm all for that.
John, everybody says that and then it inflicts pain on me some.
That's how we show we love you. All right. I'll talk to you guys later.
Have a good night, John.
Hey, John.
Same here. I wish I could be for more. I stayed for as long as humanly possible. Uh, my other meeting members are gonna be pissed, but it's okay. Um.
Just apologize.
Yeah, all right. I'll catch you guys later. Once again. It's a great meeting you, Dan, and Henry, uh, it's a great meeting as well. I got your Facebook, so.
Message me through the page, you more than welcome.
Awesome. Catch you guys later.
Thank you guys. So, uh, Henry. Tell, can you, can you maybe tell us what's wrong with Fetterman?
Um, where do I start?
Well, you know, here, so here's why I ask you. Because you are probably the, the person. That is, uh, closest to what I could consider, you know, like being a Fetterman guy. And when I say that, I'm, I say that, I say that because of, of traditionally where Fetterman kinda lies in a lot of his politics. Obviously not, not necessarily on the gun issue, but on a lot of other things. And I, and I know that you have a problem with Fetterman and I would like you to share that with us.
So I guess, let, let's start with this, you know? When you look at like left versus right in this country, it's so out of whack when you compare it to the world, right?
Yep.
And even the term socialist communist, when you look at it in the United States versus the world's political spectrum. It's, it's all out of whack. So in the United States, you know, typically they'll call Democrats and Fetterman. You know, the left. And then they'll refer to people like Fetterman who recently was quoted as saying that. He agrees with Bernie Sanders on pretty much everything he says. They would consider him, the folks in the squad. They would say that they're the far left. And for people like myself who are the far left, we consider that a damn insult. It, it's so insulting to us because when you look at where Democrats land, when you look at where Fetterman, the squad, Bernie. Where they land, I mean, they're still a right wing party. They are still a capitalist party. They are still. Um, not gonna do anything to help the proletariat and that's an insult for, for any self-respecting. True socialist or communist. So when you look at like Democrats. They probably fall just a little bit to the left of the Republicans and, you know, looking at the political compass in the upper right quadrant. Fetterman, Bernie, AOC, folks like them, maybe they dart a little bit more towards that, that center line. But they're not the left. So. but they're not the left. So my issue with Fetterman is, is pretty simple. You know, he's not gonna do anything to free the worker. He's not gonna do anything to guarantee that the, the poor, um, are lifted out of poverty, that the, the homeless are housed, that those who need food and can't afford food have access to not just food, but clean, healthy, and good food. He's not gonna do those things. He is going to pretty much just attempt to shift things a little left and then parade these little tiny accomplishments as these big deals in order to just get people, um, invigorated to vote for him again. Um, and we just saw that with the student, the student loan debt ca- uh, cancellation, you know? Um, Biden went in, when he was running for office, was saying he was gonna take this massive, massive step towards canceling it. And then, in the end, he cancels ten thousand dollars, and you saw the entire squad going, he did it. He kept up on his promise. Woo-hoo, you know, he canceled student debt, and all of us are going, no, he took a bite out of the interest at best. Um, and these are, these are the problems that folks like myself have with candidates like Fetterman or, um, there was a lady up in New York that ran as a Democrat, and she just claimed to be the first openly socialist in, you know, elected for the Democrats. They're not socialists. They're using the term. They're stealing the term from us while not doing any of the things that we support. Um, so, you know, policy-wise, that's where I'm always going to disagree with candidates like Fetterman. Beyond that, you know, right now liberals are viewing Fetterman with these rosy glasses. They're, they're, they're viewing him as this, this savior, like he's, he's this great guy. But let's not forget that when he was the mayor of his town, he chased down an unarmed black man with a shotgun. I mean, we got all pissed off when that was done Amag Arbery, and you know, we, we rioted. We rioted in the streets, and I'm, I'm perfectly happy to admit that I was right there in the streets in Philly, standing up against that type of violence. Yet here we are supposed to put down our stance and our, our belief on Black Lives Matter and go vote for a guy who did the same thing, oh, except for killing him. You know, it, it's disgusting to me, and it's just what you see with the Democrats. I mean, shape it up. It, they're Democrats. They're not as good as people want them to, to be painted as.
So, Dan.
Yes, sure.
Is there, is, is there anything you wanted to comment on there?
Well, um, you know, I, I come from a different avenue with this whole thing, obviously. Henry and I have had our discussions about this, you know, but I'm, I, I like to keep an open mind with people and deal with things that way. Um, you know, one of my, I, I have a whole bunch of problems when it comes to some of these ideas of forgiving, for instance, uh, student debt and stuff like that. I'm a college professor, you know? I have, uh, a son who has a whole bunch of debt. And I graduated college with a whole bunch of debt. I, I worked three jobs to pay that all off.
So let me, let, let me, let me ask you this. Was, was the move that Biden just did with the ten thousand dollars something you agree with? Or was it the right, is it the right answer? Let me, let me, let me put it that way. Is it the right answer?
No.
Okay.
But, but is it a step where something should be done with education? Yes. I mean, as a college prof, I'm, I'm gonna tell you what my salary is as an adjunct college professor. Okay, I earn as an adjunct, and I teach three classes a semester, basically. I earn anywhere from sixteen thousand dollars a year to maybe twenty-four thousand. I have, I may have students in my class who make more money than me as an adjunct college professor. If I teach at Penn State University, I would be making almost eighty or ninety thousand dollars a year then. The college system, and by the way, full-time professors at Penn State teach, how many classes? Three. So I'm literally teaching as many classes as a full-time college professor at Penn State. The college system, it, you know, this starts to go into things about healthcare and what happened with, oh, the Affordable Care Act, Obamacare, whatever you want to call it, where they started limiting the number of classes I could teach because they don't want to pay benefits. So there's all these interrelated things where it's not as simple as just relieving debt to make college education more affordable. One of the biggest problems I see as a college professor are the number of people who are administrators in colleges who have huge salaries, and literally, I, I will give you an example of people who literally do nothing. So I worked at Bucks County Community, I've, I've worked there for twenty-two years now. I've been a college professor at Bucks County Community College for twenty-two years. At one point, we had somebody at our campus known as the Evening Dean. Okay, the Evening Dean was supposed to be responsible for something. I'm not quite sure what it was, but she had an assistant. And the assistant had to resp- be responsive to the Evening Dean. So now you have two people. Well, our college had declining enrollment. It went out to find out why enrollment was declining, and this is a number of years ago, and there's other reasons for this. But at the time, they couldn't figure out why the enrollment was going down. So they spent like sixty thousand dollars to get a consultant to try to figure this out. So the consultant goes in and they said, well, let me call up and make an appointment, fill out an application. In the name, John Doe or Jane Doe or whatever. They go and fill it out, everything goes through smoothly. They go online, they fill in an application, it gets filled out, and, you know, they, it goes smoothly. They call a number and they said, send me an application, and the application never came. So they then called a second time and a third time, and nobody ever put the application in the mail. So the consultant went back to the administration and said, hey, what's going on here? Calling this number, I'm not getting an application. Who is respons-? So they go to this mailbox on the phone system, and they play it, and there's like hundreds of people calling up for applications, but nobody's assigned to answer the telephone. Okay, so what they do is they had to find somebody to send out applications. So they look at all the people there and they said, well, let's go ask the Evening Dean if she would take on this role with her assistant to, you know, send out these applications. And she said, no, I'm not gonna do that because it's not in my job description. And then her assistant said, she said, they said, well, how about your assistant? And she said, she can't do it because she's responsible for doing what I asked her to do. Well, they finally said, what do both of you do here? And both of them basically had no answer as to what they were actually doing. Now, these are, this is students paying salaries for somebody where they, this one individual was probably making somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand dollars a year to sit there and do nothing. So simply relieving student debt without dealing with these other issues and streamlining administrations and schools, and all of this other stuff is completely preposterous. Another, and, and I, I don't want to take up a whole lot of time talking about this, but I want to tell you one of the biggest rip-offs in the world. Every county that has a community college ha- is basically, it's funded by, in part by student fees as well as your local county government. If you look, and, and I'm gonna use the school I work at as an example, and I'm sure I'm gonna get in big trouble if this ever gets back to somebody, anybody. So our school has had fewer and fewer students on campus. Yet, they have built more and more buildings even though they have fewer and fewer students. You have more students going online. So they actually went from a five-day-a-week program to a four-day-a-week program because they don't have enough students to put in the classrooms as they continue to build new buildings. And I sit there and I think to myself, this is pure body insanity. Why is this going on? Why are they building a whole new building and a whole new wing in this other building? And you see this in Penn State, the same thing happens. Well, here's why. Because there's contracts in state government that are non-bid contracts. So for instance, if you're an engineering firm, that's a professional service, and the politicians get to pick who gets those contracts. Well, if you look at all these new buildings that they put up at the col- and, and these are government colleges, and you see that this is taxpayer money going into this, and student money going into this, and you look at who the engineering firm is, and then you go look at campaign finance reports for your, basically primarily your Republican and Democratic candidates, guess who were the big contributors to these campaigns? I've estimated that probably twenty percent, um, let me, let me, before I keep going on with this, one bill that always passes through the, through the federal government as a bipartisan bill all the time are infrastructure bills. And it's for the same exact reason, because they know once they get that taxpayer money and they shift it out of Washington and they give it to the states and local governments, that that money is gonna go back into the pockets of the politicians in the political parties. I estimated that twenty percent of our money ends up being funneled through the federal government or local government through taxes, and it's actually going to politicians, simply to get them re-elected. And it's a rip-off. It's act, it's gotta be the big, one of the biggest scams I have ever seen in my life. So yeah, I mean, giving money back to students who shouldn't be paying that money in the first place is wonderful. But why are we even in this situation? It's like, we, we need to stop this wasteful, I mean, it's literally ripping on, like, people would go to jail in other countries for this. If we saw another country doing this, we'd be like, this is the most corrupt nonsense you could believe, and, and we'd make an issue out of it, but it happened here. Students should be in, shouldn't be extorted to pay politicians. But you don't see, you don't see anybody saying, let's deal with that issue. They'll say, let's just give more money to students, and then they keep the same gravy train going.
Right. I think, so I, I think we all agree that this is something nice for a lot of people. But it doesn't fix the problem, right? Um, and, and, and I'm sure each of, each of, each of Henry, Dan, you and, and me, we, we all would have our own ideas on things of how to, how to fix or, or the next step to take. Uh, and they were, they're all probably gonna be different, but they all probably would help the problem. Um, you know, uh, so if nothing else, I, I don't understand, this is, so my problem with the whole, the whole student, this ten thousand dollar forgiveness thing is the amount of people, especially on the right, that are so freaking angry about this. You know, it's, it's like, we all agree that this is, this is next to nothing, right? This, for, for, for each person, the amount of relief is not very much.
Do, do you know what the, I, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine.
Do you know what the average student loan debt is in the United States per student?
It's probably gotta be around a hundred grand.
It's not.
No?
Nowhere even close to that.
In student.
It's twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay.
So you're basically handing a check for one-third of somebody's outstanding debt. Okay, I graduated school. I don't want to tell you how old I am, but I, I, I worked full-time when I, I worked full-time, I got an MBA.
Sure.
And I was in my deferment, um, stage, and I was actually paying back my loan early because I didn't want to have a bunch of debt. And I actually worked part-time in law school, which they said, don't work part, don't do anything while you're in law school because it's gonna adversely affect your great, well, I didn't have the luxury that I had to do that. And I was paying back stuff. When I walked out of school in nineteen, I'll tell you when I graduated, nineteen eighty-nine, I owed over forty-five thousand dollars. Today, that would be like ninety thousand, you know? And I, I'm like, I didn't, like, nobody helped me pay this back. But, and the job market really sucked back then too. I mean, it was really bad. Um, but I thought I was gonna, you know, be this young aspiring whatever and be able to pay this all back. And it never really panned out that way, but, um, I guess my point is, here's one of the problems with this. If we're gonna hand out money to people, there's somebody else who's never being discussed here. And one of the problems with this is, when you do that for one group of people and you're excluding other people, you're creating a hardship for them. And the, the question is who's being hammered by this? When you start pumping out a lot of money like that and handing it to people, you're actually doing stuff that, and there's arguments that this is not inflationary and stuff. I do not necessarily agree with that. But if you're a senior citizen, my mom's living on like a sixteen thousand dollar a year income with social security, and her home fuel prices at her house have doubled. And I know there's a lot of seniors out there who can be really harmed by inflation because they never have the opportunity to ever earn another penny. Their numbers are just, you know, what they are. So, you know, combating inflation and stuff like that. I think before we start just handing that stuff, we need to think of it in those terms also. You know, if you give somebody ten thousand dollars, it's great, but if they're gonna pay five dollars a gallon, you know, for a gallon of gas when it was two fifty before, what's, what's really the sense in giving them ten thousand dollars? You know, if it's gonna be inflationary.
So in my, in my view on that, again, this, this part is just a drop in the bucket compared to, compared to everything that was blown during COVID.
Oh, I agree.
And then, and the what of, over ten, like, what are we looking at for the military budget over ten years? Like, like ten, twelve trillion dollars?
Um, seven hundred billion a year.
I ag- I agree with you.
So.
I mean, we spend, I'm enti- I'm entirely against this complete industrial military complex nonsense. I mean, we can't wait to get ourselves involved somehow in some proxy war to just send a bunch of guns over there. I mean, it's just, it's ludicrous.
And who makes the money there? Who makes the money there? The big?
But, but, but again, I mean, two wrongs don't make things right.
No.
That's, that's the problem here. And one of the problems is, you know, people say, well, you know, we gave all this money, for instance, to oil companies. Well, we shouldn't be doing that either, you know? So it's, uh, you know, I'm not saying, like, like I say, the last thing I want to do is penalize students. I'm a college professor, willing to take that kind of money for a reason. Because I enjoy it. I want to educate people. I want to do stuff. I have these discussions in school. But by the same token, I mean, we, we, we have other things we have to cut, like military budgets, funding corporations to me. I mean, I was just talking today about how Tesla, and I'm actually kind of an Elon Musk fan to a certain extent. But, you know, when Tesla's basically technology that's been paid for by US taxpayers through NASA in their spacecraft, and, and it's going, like, the government's not getting anything in exchange. We're actually funding a private corporation to do what we used to do through NASA, and we could have all kinds of discussions about this, but we as taxpayers spent a lot of money to develop this technology to put people in space to begin with, you know? I mean, I could go through the whole tax code and why it's unfair and everything else.
We could, I, I'm sure we could go on for, for, for many hours on everything that's wrong with the federal government and the federal budget, and, and by the time the three of us are done, we'd probably cut a lot of it out, especially uh, taking a big ass chunk out of that military. I think that's something we could, I think we can all agree with that.
A point I just want to make also that, you know, no one seems to be. A point I just want to make also that, you know, no one seems to be touching on is that $10,000 that they handed out or the $20,000 for a Pell Grant, and I I haven't read exactly how that breaks down just because I was pissed off about it, just how, how it was. But based upon everything that I'm finding out, that's, they're considering that taxable income, by the way. So there, there's something with IRS code that that's like now taxable income.
We'll see how that one comes out. It may or may not come out that way, but but in general, yes, uh, loan forgiveness is technically income.
But, but, let me tell you something. The tax code in this country is another big scam. I mean, like billionaires don't pay taxes for a reason because they don't have income.
Right.
You're worth a billion dollars. What bank is not going to loan you money to put up a, you know, a mansion? You know, so then you end up with this situation. What do you consider income? You know, I have income. I have to pay taxes. I pay more than probably Mark Zuckerberg, I think it was, like, has a $1 salary per year from Facebook. But it'll never ever, I mean.
It's all capital gains, right?
It's capital gains when he sells it.
Right.
Lower rates, but he doesn't even have to sell the stuff. Because he could just walk in and borrow against the value of his stock holdings. And when he borrows to build his mansion, that's deductible. Because it's a mortgage. I mean, there's caps on it, but still, I mean, so like a regular go to work every day, you know, the kind of people that Henry's talking about, they're the ones that get screwed left and right over the tax system. And then they keep saying, well, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna tax the rich. And it's like, wait a second, for some reason, I, every, every once in a while, like as an attorney, I actually make some decent money every couple of years. Like, I'll handle a personal injury case and I make some, well, by the end of the time I I get the money, like a third of it's gone. And it's like, I know I'm not rich. I literally, I if, if, my ex-wife is rich. She took everything. But, but I know, you know, I'm not a rich person, but I'm considered rich that year under the tax code. It's preposterous. You know, it's literally preposterous.
So we're going to hit, we're going to hit a hard break in about five or six minutes. Henry, any, any closing comments here on our, on our little discussion?
Um, closing comments, I mean, really, it's just, uh, you know, one of those times for a shameless plug that if anybody sees this, wants to join the workers party and, you know, help out, that'd be awesome. There's, we're, we're building essentially a new party and um, anything that we can coalesce with the the Pirate Party or the Keystone Party on and, you know, help to create a better Pennsylvania. I am absolutely full bore on, um, look forward to to coalescing on projects and the likewise in the future.
Shameless plug for me, shameless plug for me real quick. PApirates.org, uh, Henry, feel free to check out our platform. There's probably some stuff you'll like to steal out of that. I I came up with, I came up with what I call the corporate death penalty. You might want to check that out. It's not actually labeled as that. If you, if you look at our platform, uh, you, you might figure it out. But if you don't, let me know and I can point it to, point you towards it. Um, but yeah, anybody uh, wants to go to the join page on our website, PApirates.org. Um, we're not collecting dues. We're just collecting uh, anybody that wants to be on the mailing list and be on our contact list to join these meetings in the future. And uh, yeah, we're growing too. We're new too. We're still growing. And uh, we're hoping to have some candidates on the ballot next year to compete with Dan, your party. The Keystone Party, which you said you're not registered in Keystone. You're registered as an independent, which
I'm registered as an independent.
In Pennsylvania, if you're an independent, you can, you can be on any third party's ballot. If, you don't have to be registered as them. Uh, so I'll give you the last word here. Dan, you're up.
Last word?
You get the last word.
Why would you ever do that?
Well, you, you're the candidate, so that that's here, that's, that's probably, you know, got the most consequence here on the, uh, this year.
Yeah, yeah, I, I guess I'll leave you with the thought that, um, you know, I I saw that uh, there was this whole back and forth thing between Fetterman and Oz over uh, vegetables or no, not vegetables. And then, um, you know, there was a whole big issue about how many debates were going to take place. And um, apparently Oz challenged Fetterman to five debates. And then Fetterman came back and said, the people of Pennsylvania should have no fewer than three debates and every party who has, everybody, every candidate who is on the ballot should be able to participate. Isn't that interesting?
That's very interesting.
Strangely, I haven't heard from either of them.
I don't expect you would.
I don't think they want me standing there calling both of their parties corrupt.
Yeah, that would be amazing.
Can I find out where, if you're going to be there, because I'm coming with popcorn?
Yeah.
Ah, people have said, gee, I'd like to hear you debate some of these issues with them. Well, I would go through like the tax stuff and what a rip off it is and all these public programs and why are we spending all this money dropping bombs on people all around the, I mean, you know, it's just the whole thing's sickening to me, so. Anyway, I guess that's my last word, that I'll go home, I'll go to sleep sick again.
Well, I hope, I hope not, but uh, well, thank you guys all for being here. Ed, I know we haven't had much chance for you to chime in here, but uh, thanks for, thanks for joining in and um uh, chiming in uh, on our uh, earlier uh, settling of our next meeting, which will be um, 13 days from now. Ed, you have, you have something to say?
Yeah, does uh, the, the, uh, does the, uh, do you have, does Workers Party uh, have a Facebook page? And is there a, does, uh, Dan, does he have a, a, a Facebook page as well?
Yeah, so the Workers Party has a Facebook page. It's in the chat in this uh, this Gypsy meeting. And then my political candidate, whatever the heck you want to call it, Facebook page for myself is also in the chat.
For the record, it's facebook.com slash WP of PA for the Workers Party. Facebook page.
And mine, I think, is Daniel Wassmer for US Senate or something.
And I know a sure, a quick search will find you, Dan, on Facebook.
I'm technologically challenged.
But we did, we did nail down your, we did nail down the proper address for your website.
Correct.
Is Wassmerforpa.com. That's W A S S M E R.
With a number four.
Number four, yes. Sorry for, yeah, I got that right. All right.
Numeral.
A numeral four. Well, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate you all for joining us and this lively conversation. And uh, we will be back in 13 days because we're going to Tuesday nights. So it'll be uh, two weeks from now, but the Tuesday, so 13 days. So you guys have a great night and you all are always welcome to join and uh, have some more awesome conversations.
Sounds good.
Definitely.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Henry. Thanks, Ed. And thanks, Johnny and Alex for joining us.